Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. By roll call, see that all council members are here tonight with the exception of Council Member Crittenden, who's been excused this evening. Like to thank those that are here in public tonight in the chambers of the council, as well as those who may be watching at home on City 56. We just like to express our heartfelt thanks and condolences and sympathy to those citizens in Houston and that area for what they're going through. And our thoughts and our prayers have been with these people. And we just can't even imagine what they, the troubles they have, as well as those people that are preparing for Irma and the fires that we have up in Montana, as well as in California. I don't think our nation has ever had two major hurricanes close or hitting at the same time as close as what these have. And so, we're being challenged as citizens of this country. And may we extend our heartfelt thoughts and prayers and anything we can do to support and help our fellow citizens, may we do so. We'd like to begin this evening with invocation of VAS, the Vice Mayor, if he'd lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Council Member Leach. Would you please stand?
Our kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come before the opening of the regular meeting of the Cholo City Council. We ask again that thou will bless those unfortunate people that have lost so much in Texas and in Louisiana. And we ask a blessing on those that are in the path of the oncoming hurricane, that they will find themselves safe and the communities intact. We thank thee for the many blessings that we have living on this mountain and for the people for which we work. We thank thee for the many blessings that thou hast given this community. And we ask that be thy will. We would receive more rain before the onset of any fire season that we might encounter. Again, we ask a blessing on all of those in the country that are hurting. We ask a blessing on the leadership of our country as we find our way through these difficult times. Again, we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council Member Leach. Tonight, our first item is Call to the Public. Any citizen that has a matter that's not on the agenda, who would like to bring to our attention or concerns, you may do so at this time. Know that your time's limited to three minutes. It seems that nobody moved. A call to the public. We'll close Call to the Public and come back to the Consent Calendar. Are there any items on the Consent Calendar that need to be discussed separately? Okay, I'll go through those. One, we have a proclamation proclaiming September 13th through the 17th as Navajo County Fair Days. We encourage our citizens to go down to the county fair in Holbrook and enjoy the festivities that are happening down there. We also have a consideration of approval of the Declaration of Surplus Property for August 2017 auction, consideration of the acceptance of East Owens Waterline Replacement Project, City of Cholo Project W-0517, and consideration in acceptance of the Arizona Commerce Authority Economic Strength Program grant award for fiscal year 2018, and the approval of the associated budget transfers. And then we have the minutes of the Cholo City Council Regular Meeting of August 15th and the joint study of August 29th. Council Member Alsop?
Will move.
Have a motion to approve. Have a second by Vice Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? See that that pass six to zero. Next item, we have new businesses. Item A, Consideration of Resolution Number R-2017-25, approving intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Game and Fish Commission to implement community fishing program at Cholo Creek. Mr. Brimhall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to be with you this evening. In fall of 2015, representatives from the Arizona Game and Fish Department met with city staff to discuss the possibility of integrating a section of Cholo Creek into the community fishing program. Staff worked with Arizona Game and Fish to craft the parameters of the program. If approved, the intergovernmental agreement will allow Arizona Game and Fish to stock Cholo Creek in the meadow with catchable rainbow trout in the autumn and spring. Channel catfish, if desired, may be stocked in September and May. Sunfish will be stocked at least once annually, likely in June. Bass is also an option to be stocked sometime in the spring. The Arizona Game and Fish Commission approved the agreement on August 4th, 2017. The community fishing program will have two stocking locations, one near the footbridge that leads to the Cholo Bluff Trail and the other behind Hampton Inn. Daily limits for each species are two catfish, two trout, five sunfish, and one bass. The term of this agreement will be for an initial two-year period and will be renewed thereafter on a schedule with other community fishing programs. Costs to the city of Cholo are shown in the table below. If you want to, if you have any questions, I asked a couple of the wonderful employees from the Arizona Game and Fish Department to be here with us tonight to answer any technical questions that I have. And I'm also available for questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any comments or questions, the council? Council Member Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is always a great thing for the community and for the kids to do this. And I know it's a lot of planning and thought put in with the Game and Fish Department and also with the, with the county, with the staff. The only question I have with this is, who is going to police the area for trash? I know there's a lot of issues that was talked about a long time ago from doing this from Cholo Lake all the way down to the bridge. And the big issue was all the trash that it is going to bring. And I just want to make sure that if the kids are going to be fishing and adults will be fishing, that they pick up their stuff. But we need somebody patrolling that and keeping that meadow clean. That's just one of those things that is a drastic thing that a lot of people want to see kept clean.
Absolutely. Operationally, city staff will keep an eye on it and will monitor that. And we'll add that to our rounds more regularly. There'll be more trash bins available. And we'll be able to take care of that.
You're gonna be able, you'll be able to put like garbage cans down there or something where, because it's gonna be a lot, you know, the pictures in here of the worm and the mealworm and everything else. I can see the lids and everything just being all over the place. And, you know, it's a great concept. And, you know, my grandkids will be out there fishing, I guarantee it. But they, you know, I need to make sure that it's cleaned up and it looks nice.
Trash is definitely a byproduct of fishing. And our general rounds, we do have rounds that go out there and clean up trash every so often. It will be more of a formulaic systematic rounds. We'll just add that in. All of the trash cans will be picked up daily during the busy season. And we'll check for trash and get it all cleaned up. And we're hoping eventually the culture of fishermen will change. And I think it's probably pretty good already. I think there's a lot of really good fishermen in Cholo and the surrounding area who will use the area responsibly. However, a little peer pressure will help.
The last question I have is, okay, there's two stocking areas, one behind Hampton Inn, one at the bridge. Where's the fishing going to be available for the people to fish? Is it going to be from Cholo Lake all the way down? Or is it just at, in the meadow? Or where is this going to be taking place at?
Well, that's kind of for the anglers to figure out what the best places are. I imagine, this is kind of a technical question that may be answered in a little better way by our gentleman who are here from Arizona Game and Fish. But they'll swim upstream, they'll swim downstream. Generally, they'd like to kind of hang out in the same areas where they're released. But, you know, fish are going to be fish. So...
I think part of this, though, isn't it taking and making this the public area so they can go there without any interruption of private property? Because some of that creek is on private property.
Correct. There will be signs posted, private property. And all the way up from the Hampton Inn to the bridge, I imagine there'll be pretty good fishing all the way from the top to the bottom in there.
Yeah, because there is private property back up in there past the Hampton. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't get involved in, like the mayor said. Thank you.
I think also is a good comment there, Council Member Alsop. Possibly some signage, you know, maybe impact littering to the fullest extent, let people know what it could possibly cost them or something there, too. And just encourage them to keep it nice. I have a question, though, for our representatives. I know right now we're limiting the catch to two per day as far as the limit. Help me understand why we may not go to or couldn't go to maybe catch and release and possibly get larger fish? Or tell me what's the habits of fish? If, you know, the chances of getting some big fish that people really enjoy catching out of there?
Sure. Well, just to start for the record, my name is Scott Gerton. I manage the community fishing program for the department. And I've been doing so since 2014. The regulations that we have for the community waters...
Just pull that mic toward you a little bit there, please.
Sure. A little better?
Yeah, that's great.
So the regulations that we've established for most of our community waters, we've tried to simplify them so that we've got basically what we call two tiers. Either a lake, a lake limit usually is applied to our waters that we stock very frequently. We call them our core waters, which are usually stocked about every two weeks throughout the year. Cholo Creek would be what we consider to be in expansion water, and we stock it less frequently. So because it's stocked less frequently, we typically apply more restrictive regulations to those waters. We actually do have one water that is catch and release. It's our hope that we can, you know, give people options if they want to, you know, release fish. That's certainly, you know, up to the individual anglers whether or not they want to do something like that. We've actually got one city within our program, Gilbert, did, at Water Ranch Lake, we've applied a catch and release to our bass and sunfish and catch and keep to trout and catfish, just to give a little bit of a blend there. The city had some concerns about excessive injuries and stuff to waterfowl. So we went to a catch and, catch and release, single barbless hook for those species. But we did allow bait. So, anyway, that's something we can discuss in the future.
Great.
Most definitely.
The water depth through there, is it sufficient, you know, for a year-round survival of the fish?
I can probably refer this to Mike. But yes, it was surveyed in December of 2016, I believe. It was found to have a pretty good population of a variety of different species, bass, catfish, bullhead, I think there was golden shiner, and some other species. Mike Lopez from our regional office just had gone out and put a temp logger in the creek just recently so we could get a little better information about when we might be able to start our trout stocking. Through that section of meadow, because of its, you know, it's good, it's a lot of sun exposure, doesn't move quite as fast as the other, you know, sections of creek. So therefore, it does heat up. And it's more conducive to some of those warm water species that are present in there. But we believe, yes, it is conducive to fish, sport fishing year-round.
Thank you. Any other questions? We just look forward to this partnership. It's a, it'd be a great asset to our community and things. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And kudos to Jay for spearheading this for the city. We appreciate that very much. And we look forward to the partnership.
Thank you. Look to council for a motion. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2017-25, approving an interdepartmental agreement with the Arizona Game and Fish Commission to implement a community fishing program at Cholo Creek on the city of Cholo property in the meadow.
Have motion, seconded by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor. Any opposed? See that that pass six to zero. Thank you. Next item is Item B, Consideration of Amendment to Professional Service Contract with Armstrong Consultants, Inc. for Airport Master Plan Update. You're not Mr. Bar, there.
I'm not an airport manager.
All right.
Who went on TV.
Guy standing in place tonight. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In April 2012, a request for qualifications was published to solicit statements of qualifications from airport consulting firms to provide planning, operations, engineering design, and airport construction management per Federal Aviation Administration and Arizona Department of Transportation standards. The selection process followed the procedures outlined by FAA and the Arizona revised statutes Title 34. Five firms were interviewed after reviewing the seven SOQs that were received, and Armstrong Consultants Incorporated was selected as the number one firm. The city of Cholo has a five-year on-call agreement with Armstrong, which includes the airport master plan update that is required by FAA on a periodic basis to ensure continued federal funding for future airport development. The last master plan update was prepared in 2012, and updates typically occur every five to seven years. The council approved a grant to fund the master plan update at its August 15th, 2017 meeting. Creating this new master plan will allow the city to receive funding for necessary airport improvements. The project, the master plan project is supported by FAA at 95% or $449,668.04 of the total project cost, which is estimated at $470,703.20. ADOT and the city will each pay 2.5% or $11,767.58 of the project cost. Staff recommends council approve Task Order E with Armstrong Consultants, Incorporated in amount not to exceed $470,703.20 with the city's cost share not to exceed $11,767.58 for the airport master plan update for the Cholo Regional Airport. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Council Member Leach?
So by doing this, you're telling me that we're going to get $470,703.20 for an improvement at the airport? What kind of improvement at the airport are we looking at?
Well, the master plan really just lays out what the improvements are in the future. So it will show, for instance, the crosswind runway. It'll show some new airport property that the city has acquired. It'll take an inventory of all the hangars and things like that. Basically, it's a, it's a document so that we can plan projects in the future. It's not going to necessarily be a project except, the only work product is going to be a report document and a set of plans.
I, I think I understood that part. But we're, we have input of the master plan, right? I mean, we're not going to let somebody come in here and say, no, you need to do this, we need to put this on your master plan. We're involved with, with Tom and whoever else as far as the master plan goes at the airport.
Actually, the first step in the master plan is to form a steering committee with citizen input, probably some folks from the Aviation Advisory Committee, some folks from the city council. So we'll have a steering committee that really talks to the consultant, tells him what we want to see in the plan.
Well, it's not going to be a whole lot different than what we currently already have, as the master plan is just going to be updated and stamped.
Right. It's an update. And I think the biggest element in the update is that FAA has changed some requirements and things like that. So it's a pretty major undertaking, even though it's called an update.
Any other comments, questions? Turn to council for a motion. Council Member Leach?
I move to approve the Task Order E as part of the professional service contract with Armstrong Consultants, Inc. in amount not to exceed $470,703.20 with the city's cost share not to exceed $11,767.58 for a new, new airport master plan for the Cholo Regional Airport.
Have motion, seconded by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor. Any opposed? See that that pass six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Camp.
Thank you.
Next item is 7C, Consideration of Award to Construction Contract for Westwood Subdivision Sewer Line Replacement Project, Project Number S-1216. Mr. Hymasaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city's fiscal year 2017 capital improvement program budget included $450,000 for a sewer replacement project labeled Westwood Subdivision. Scope of work includes removing the, removing the existing six-inch clay sewer main and brick manholes and installing approximately 2,800 linear feet of new eight-inch PVC sewer main, 12 new manholes and new services to each lot. Any asphalt or concrete removed during the installation of the work will be replaced as well. Project was designed by Ironside Engineering with a construction estimate of $435,000. ADQ approvals to construct have been obtained. The project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Rowling Specialty Contracting at $381,237.50, Western Grade LLC at $419,968.75, Apache Underground Excavation at $493,600, Central Arizona Civil Contractor Company at $551,393.50, and Mountain High Excavation at $608,770. Staff recommends award in construction contract for the Westwood Subdivision Sewer Line Replacement Project, City of Cholo Project S-1216 to Rowling Specialty Contracting in amount not to exceed the $381,237.50. The bid tab is attached. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Council Member Leach?
When you said clay, is, how close are we getting? Is there still a lot of clay left?
There's still clay in our system. You know, clay pipe is naturally an older product. And some of it is still in good condition. Some of it has been infiltrated by roots. Kind of depends on the area, kind of depends on how it was installed, things like that. This is an area where there is some cracks and failures. Old surfaces that have been kind of abandoned, that need to be properly abandoned. And the old brick manholes that need to be rebuilt as well, too.
And just one more comment, if I can, then I'm pretty much done. Looking at these bid sheets, I, the part that kind of really gets me is traffic control. What the heck do they do for traffic control? I mean, when you're in, is it because, they usually, I mean, you go down some of these subdivisions that are so small, they're, and we're, they're paying for traffic control. I mean, that's a pretty good chunk of money for, what do they do for traffic control?
Traffic control and MOB and some other line items like that, or they vary pretty greatly on what the contractor might put in there. Detour plans need to be set up, proper detour routes. For example, a lot of the sewer mains being built right down the middle of roadway. So they need to temporarily close the roadway, but maintain access to the local traffic for the trash pickup, the mail, and whoever lives on the street. Otherwise, they'll close it to through traffic. They'll have proper detour set up. It's also a place where they put profit. They put other things included in the bid. So it's one of the line items that varies significantly. But traffic control plans be submitted pre-construction meeting and agreed upon before they start.
And we never have to deal with that, then? Is that what you're telling me? None of our people are going over there dealing with traffic?
Oh, we're not supposed to do the traffic control. No, they are supposed to provide the traffic control for the project. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Look for a motion. Councilwoman Kukavas?
I move to award the construction contract for the Westwood Subdivision Sewer Line Replacement Project, City of Cholo Project Number S-1216 to Rowling Specialty Contracting in amount not to exceed $381,237.50.
Have a motion. We have a second by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you, Shane. Next item we have is Consideration of Award to Construction Contract for 10th Avenue Roadway Improvement, City of Cholo Project R-0917. Mr. Hymasaw.
Thank you, Mayor. The 2018 capital improvement program budget includes $175,000 for a roadway improvement project labeled 10th Avenue near Safeway. Scope of work includes removing the existing concrete, asphalt, and asphalt for 10th Avenue, starting from the intersection of West Owens, heading north approximately 500 linear feet to the cul-de-sac along the west side of the local Cholo Safeway property. The new curb, gutter, sidewalk, and new four-inch asphalt section with associated eight-inch thick aggregate base course will be installed. Any subgrade issues uncovered during the construction of the new roadway will be repaired as well. Project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of $185,000. Project was bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Perkins Cinder LLC, $214,090.46. Hatch Construction and Paving at $265,279.0. And Mountain High Excavation LLC at $302,623. Project savings from the Cholo Lake Road Phase II Reconstruction Project have been identified to complete the funding for the project. Staff recommends award in the construction project for the 10th Avenue Roadway Improvement, City of Cholo Project R-0917 to Perkins Cinder LLC in amount not to exceed the $214,090.46 and approve the associated budget transfer. Bid tab for that one is attached as well and available for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. Shane, I have five or six questions, so don't take it personal. I'm going to be asking a bunch of questions.
Go for it.
First thing is, I went by there and looked at this. And to me, this looks just like what we did on Cholo Heights. We're pulling up sidewalks that shouldn't be pulled up. We got about eight or 10-foot, maybe 12-foot of cement that is warped in that needs to be replaced. The sidewalk is on the opposite side of the road from where the houses are. Is that's what you're going to replace in, as the same place?
Yes, sir.
And so, and there's only five houses on there. It's not benefiting anybody that's working or lives there because that, their houses are on the other side of the road. There's culverts. There's no road. I mean, it's dirt coming out of their driveways and stuff like that. I cannot see spending extra money to pull up asphalt, I mean, to pull up sidewalks and replace it when they don't need to be replaced. I totally agree with replacing the road. It's just, that road needs to be replaced. 16th need to be replaced. Cooley between Central and Fourth needs it really bad. But I cannot spend taxpayers' money pulling up a sidewalk and replacing it when it's not even benefiting the people who live across the street from it, or even benefiting us.
I see what you're saying. Actually, the original scope for this project in the CIP included about a third of, a third or half, I believe, of the actual concrete to be replaced. When we went out there, we started identifying the concrete. We went out there and started painting. You probably saw the paint on the concrete. He's painted, save this, keep, or take that, save this, take that. And it got to be pretty lopsided where you'd save curb, but the sidewalk behind it needed to go, or the curb needed to go. And then the sidewalk was, you couldn't save it because the curb had to go. And so, it started to add up pretty quickly. Once you realize the savings from the Cholo Lake job, it was, it was a decision to make, go ahead and move forward to replacing all the concrete, as is. I believe the solo, or whatever development was built there at the time, I don't know if it was Safeway or not, that built that, all those improvements, they had to build their frontage. So we're putting back their frontage that was built as a part of their improvements. As an effort to hold this road together and do, you know, a finer improvement in the area, we are adding ribbon curb on the other side of the road where there is none. So we're wrapping ribbon curb around the other side. It's not, it's not sidewalk, but it is a ribbon curb to kind of hold that road together. And it'll look, it'll be a more finished product when we're done.
I totally agree with the ribbon curb on the side where the, where the customers live, where they have access in and out. But to pull up a sidewalk and change it out when it's not all broken up or defeated, there's, I just can't see spending the taxpayers' money on that.
We, we got over half, over half the concrete easily.
I went there and looked. And it's just kind of like Cholo Heights where it just wasn't, you know, you had, you painted and everything. It's, finally, when you guys just did the road, then it turned out just great. And everybody loved it because that's their main issue. Their main issue was the road. It wasn't the sidewalks.
And something we did, we encountered when we did the Cholo Heights projects is, because we did that type of concrete removal and replacement, the price escalated very quickly because it was piecemeal. So, and once again, knowing that we're, we're over half of the concrete out, we had the funds to go ahead and replace the roadway with concrete, we went ahead and made the call to include it all in the project. And, and an offset would be probably bringing those concrete prices down. That was our goal. Because we did see escalated concrete price in the Cholo Lake project because of the way we put it back.
I just, I'm just, you know, I totally understand. I'm just trying to voice my opinion. If the sidewalk is on the side of the house where all the houses were, it might be a different thing. So I appreciate that.
Bet.
Councilmember Leach?
So, it seems to me that that, it's a pretty busy road, busier than you would think because of Safeway. Is that road going to get any wider at all toward the, the people that live there with the ribbon curbing? Or is it stay exactly the same?
Being 24 feet wide completely. From, from edge of curb to the back of the ribbon curb, we had to cheat the ribbon curb into the roadway to keep 24 feet of travel width. That's all that's there. There's a lot of, a lot of tight ditches on there. The rideaway's not very large, or not very wide on that side at all. And we're pretty limited by all of the utilities. Gas runs right down the ditch, foam, et cetera. So we kept the roadway width the same. We did add the ribbon curb that's drivable. It's just another surface We did add the ribbon curb that's drivable, it's just another surface drive line, but it, no, we're adding, we're not widening the roadway.
I think it's what I meant by the traffic. I think it's more foot traffic than anything, so sidewalks are, be nice if we can do them on both sides. I agree with Councilman Alsop, but I know when you're pulling out there and people are walking, you can't, you got to wait for people walking down the sidewalk or crossing the road or on the other side of the road, and it's just so small, but, thank you.
I bet.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, and just a spinoff from Mike's observation is, was serious consideration given to moving the sidewalk to the housing side, and if so, was that going to be more expensive? It just seems to make sense.
No, I see your concern. The big thing with the west side of the roadway is you have all the cleanouts and the water meters, I think there's some gas meters as well, they're right on the backside of that ditch, that's, that's scratched in there right now, and that wouldn't be a larger utility movement. We looked at all those cleanouts there, and we have cleanouts, water meters, everything we have to get redug, pulled out, moved back before you could force something in there. Also, the grades get pretty steep. Surprisingly, the grades rise on that west side very quickly, and we might get in a situation where we have to do retaining walls, and, and just knowing that we're putting back what was there is the overall goal, is overall CIP scope of the work, the, what was put in there by the developer when they put the store, and we're putting it back.
City manager?
I'd say Shane's exactly right. When Mega Foods built that project, they were required to put that sidewalk in. There's far more traffic, foot traffic, from a commercial business than there will be from the residential. The residential development on 10th Avenue is a byproduct of them building that road. They just, it's not even a subdivision, they just divided the property up and built a few houses in there, but as Shane said, there's five houses. Our commercial code would require that they put a sidewalk on the commercial side of the development, that's where most of the foot traffic's going to be.
And I think really, if you were to go in there and piecemeal it, you'd probably spend almost the same amount replacing half of it at piece by piece, cutting and, cutting and pouring, and cutting and pouring as you would to, to take it out, and probably almost the same price of replacing it all at one time.
You would see higher pricing, that's for sure.
Real close there. Any other comments, questions? Look for a motion. Councilmember Leach?
I move to award the construction contract for 8th, for 10th Avenue Roadway Improvement, City of Cholo Project Number R-0917, to Perkins Cinder LLC, in amount not to exceed $214,090.46, and approve the associated budget. How come we can't round that off to like $91.00?
Have a motion, second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? See that pass five to one. Thank you, Mr. Hemosaw. Next item is summary of current events. I look to council members for any current events. Councilmember Leach?
I don't have a current event, but I do want to give my condolences out to the Patterson family. Vi Patterson passed away, I believe, a couple days ago, and if you, if you know Kenny Patterson worked for the City of Cholo for many years, and it was his mom, they have a viewing tomorrow, and I think the funeral's Thursday or something, but anyway, condolences to the whole family. I think Kenny's wife still works for the city courthouse still, so.
Thank you. Any other council members? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city staff and the city manager for their assistance in getting the field ready, the senior field ready, for the first annual Guns and Hoses softball game that was to provide a funding source for Darren Reed's scholarship fund for the first, first game out. I was a little nervous, but by halftime, by, not halftime, by the second inning, we started to see the stands fill up, and everyone was very complimentary of that, and we raised a sufficient amount of money to offset expenses, and we're very happy with what the city managed to do for us in short order to get us in a good field. Thank you.
That's great. Any other comments, council? Vice Mayor?
I forgot to add something important.
Don't say the score.
Don't want to say the score?
It's not that important.
We won't say the score then.
Cholo Police Department was what?
It's not that important.
They pay those. But anyway, thank you for all...
Was there a winner? Did you announce the winner?
Yeah, the Darren Reed Scholarship Fund was a winner.
The Darren Reed Scholarship Fund, everybody played well, and it was a good game, conducted well, and a lot of good players on both teams.
That's great.
Especially the women.
Yeah. Just, toward, a couple of weeks ago, we were, had the opportunity to go down as council members of staff to the City of Leach's convention that we have in Tucson. It was a very well-attended, very well-put-together conference where I was able to learn from other, our peers and different association. We had some youth delegates that went down from our high school. It's the second year that they've been able to attend the conference, and it's great to see their enthusiasm and excitement as they learn a little bit more about government and what goes on in cities and towns. We had a great event that we have, League of Cities, at the end, that we kind of have a showcase of cities, and our, we partner with the other communities around the White Mountain area, and we always have a root beer and drawings and a fun night, and I think it was just a great, a great tribute to, to our community and the things that we have. I just also want to, you know, thank how the city rallied around and people here with Gus, a member who lost his wife, untimely death there in Taylor, close by in, in the funeral. We had some of our city managers, city attorney that came home and attended that, and we just appreciate their support of our neighbors here, so appreciate it. City manager, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say this about the Guns and Hoses game, our police department has a very good The month of September is National Library Sign Up Month. Anyone who signs up for a new card throughout the month will be entered into a drawing to win a free movie card, so that's the entire month of September. And this Saturday, September 9, from 8:00 a.m. to noon will be our, there'll be a community yard sale at the Frontier Field, 600 North, 9th Place. In the Public Works Projects, the waterline project on the Dusa Clubs is, continues and is expected to be completed in the next few weeks and by the end of September. The parking area was extended at the Cholo Bluff Trail in the Meadow. Restrooms at the Cholo Lake, at Cholo Lake are under construction, and crews are working on drainage issues and doing weed control. As far as the project on US 60 Dusa Clubs on the west, east side of town, administered by ADOT, the paving on the south side should begin next week with traffic routed to the north side. When the south side's done, they'll pre, prepare the, the north side for, they'll improve the grade and extend the culverts and prepare it for paving, and the traffic will be routed to the south side, so that project continues. In two weeks, as the mayor mentioned, we, we had some of our student council go down to the league meetings, but in two weeks, we'll have our, on September 19, the council, at that council meeting, we'll have members of the Cholo Student Council come to the city to job shadow that day, and then they'll join us for the council meeting as we have done in the past few years. It's the, we call it the annual Student Government Day, and they spend the day with us and learn about the functions of city government. And finally, we announced last council meeting that we would showcase the fourth and last council-identified priority infrastructure, preserving and exist, our existing assets at tonight's meeting, but based on the student council joining us next meeting, we thought it'd be a good idea to move that presentation until then to give them the opportunity to hear about the council's priorities and goals, and the processes the council uses to make decisions about, about policies and also about our city budget. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other comments? Okay. This time, scheduling a meeting just reminds you, we have our retreat scheduled for October the 5th, and that's the only other meetings or regular meetings that we have scheduled. I've seen no other business tonight, I'll adjourn this meeting.